... one nation under God in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Carrie, would you please take a roll?
Bob DePaul.
I'm here.
Peggy Back.
Provo.
Shelley Kidd.
Here.
Jim Christopher.
Here.
Gina Musarelli.
Here.
Okay, has everybody got a copy of the agenda because we had to add a couple of things that came in late. We originally had, we were first going to just do the office administrator position, but the ORV park people at the county asked if we could consider waiving some money and I told them it has to go to the board and I didn't think so and his last comment to me is, "I know I have to ask." So, that's on here. And then, of course, the benefits package, we've got to get it rocking and rolling for everybody for January 1st. So, is there any questions or comments to the agenda? If not, a motion to approve the agenda submitted would be in order.
I'll approve the agenda as soon as I can.
One second.
Okay, any questions from the board? No? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, good. Nothing on public hearing, nothing on presentations, nothing on unfinished business, this is to take care of these items. So, the first item is, I think you have a copy of a letter that I got from Dan Stensel from the Oakdale County Parks. They wanted to know if we would waive the application fee for the site plan for the ORV park that's going to come in in January. I told Dan, people, when I met him, because they come to our fire station every three weeks for an update meeting on stuff, I said, "I don't believe we would be able to do this because that's not our money for the most part. Most of that goes to the planner and the engineer for their reviews. We have to pay that. We have to pay the board members to come in and sit on it. There's only a piece of it that goes to the township and I didn't think we'd be able to offset that for the county who I think is in a better position to pay it than we are." So, his answer, Mike Donnelly's answer to me was, "Well, we have to ask." So, this letter is asking, is there a motion by anybody that wants to waive the fee to the county?
Questions are coming.
Sure.
Is there any negative political outcome that comes our way by not doing this?
I don't think so. I don't think he actually expected us to do it, but he says they have to ask.
The Congress, is there any advantage if we do do it and ask our engineers and planners to suck it up on this one?
This site plan is going to take some extra steps on it because one of the things I know they're coming forward on is they want to ask if we'll give them a special use permit for the first year and then give them some time for some of the final updates that they need to do to the facility going forward and they want to have a meeting in January. This, I just, I'm just, I don't think, I ain't going to buy us $5,590 bucks worth of good law, I'll tell you that.
Okay, Carrie, then I'm on four.
And mine was along the same lines really is, how can you not have a site plan when you're building something like that? That's part of the package and even though we're not managing it.
They've been getting people spending big bucks to buy specialty advertising in there and they're taking a lot of money from grants, this to the cost of that park. I'm just being honest with you. It's beyond.
Well, and even though we aren't running it, it is still in rural township and if we don't dotterize and cross our Ts, I don't want any liability.
Yep.
And that'll happen. They come back at everyone if something goes wrong.
Okay, there's no support for it. I need a motion from somebody that I officially tell Dan Stensel that, "We're sorry, but we can't."
I will move.
That sounds good. Okay, that's my motion. Are you seconding it too?
I will second it.
Okay, if there are any other questions from the board? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, okay. I will send them a letter. Okay, next item is to discuss the new benefits package from Ecto. I'll kind of recap it. Chief Mason and Jim and I sat with the people from Ecto, the personnel company we hired to rewrite our employee manual and to change our benefits and unless Chief, you or Jim has a conflicting opinion, I think we felt the stuff was in pretty good shape. There's a couple of very minor text changes that are in here, but I think this document is good to go. We would need to approve this employee handbook and then the management procedure guidelines, which was really set up just as a kind of a catch-all for whatever didn't fit into the manual or somewhere else. And it all looked pretty consistent to all of us today. The biggest change, of course, is for the benefits to get it for the firefighters to have health insurance going forward. And so, what we've done is, the change in here will provide the state guideline for health insurance that we've always used for everybody that had health insurance now and for the office personnel that is full-time and for the firefighters that are now full-time. And what we've done is, we've eliminated the dental plan and the eye care because frankly, most of the discussion was, it was a questionable negligible benefit anyway in relation to the premiums. I don't even know when it got started, probably 40 years ago or something, but when we were looking at this, we took a look at everything and we eliminated that. And then, since they have changed the laws that effective January 1, you can again have an HRA that it gives you tax exempt dollars, I'm suggesting we eliminate the money that went into the health retirement savings plan that we were giving people to offset the taxes they were paying on the other money they were getting. So, in essence, this puts it all back to the way it was before the Obama laws made it impossible to provide an HRA because they've changed effective January 1, 2020. We're complying with the state guidelines for the amount you get, whether it's single, couple, or a family plan. And if we can get this done today, we should be able to have it so people have their card hopefully for January 1 to start submitting their medical premiums or whatever they want to do with it. Again, it's limited to being used for medical premiums or bills like dental, eye care, any of that stuff. But you have to go through a process as you do with any of these in an HRA. You have to be able to show a invoice for whatever it is you did, that it was a medical premium. In other words, they don't want you to go to CVS and have, "I got my prescription filled and I bought a quart of milk and a gallon and some potato chips and everything else and have it." So, you have to be able to substantiate it. But these work pretty good really. For the most part, they're pretty simple to use. They'll get a debit card against that account. Patty needs to have it set up so that it'll be available January 1 and so.
In my experience, it rejects it if it's not an allowable expense.
Yeah, either you get it rejected, you either substantiate it or they actually end up, I think eventually sending you a W-2 or a 1099 that says, "This is taxable." So, that's the gist of what's in here. I don't know, Jim, did you want to add anything? Do you think I've missed anything?
No.
Chief Mason, do you think I've missed anything?
We went through it this morning, so.
Ad nauseam.
We made some changes, but they're all minor.
Real minor stuff. So, she has a couple of minor changes. It's very, very minor text changes and I know we sent all this to you. I'll give you an example. One of them was on holidays, Chief caught this. Somehow they listed veterans day out of sequence. It should have been after Columbus and before Thanksgiving and they had it higher up in the list. So, it's what I would call a typo and there's a few other ones in here, but they're all very, there's a column set up on one chart that doesn't have anything in it. We don't pull that out because it was confusing. Those types of things. And on the chief's phone number on page 46, we just took the words out, Kevin's cell. It's his number and everybody knows it. And wherever it said Assistant Fire Chief, because we don't have one, we crossed the word Assistant off. I think that's pretty much most of them we had. So, I think we're good for this. If everybody's agreeable to it, we need a motion to approve. The handbook is outlined with the Ecto people today and the benefit changes and the other one's called the management procedure guideline that you got too.
Okay. My, I thought we were just going over the health part, so I didn't read everything?
Okay. All right.
But the health part, I mean, it looked fine to me.
Okay, I know it's a separate thing.
Yeah, see, I just had to be timely.
Well, the health part's the only part that's kind of like time sensitive because we need to get those funds set up.
Okay, but the employee handbook, this was all updated. I did not get a chance to read all this, is what I'm saying.
Well, I don't know. Whatever you want to do with minor stuff.
I think it's awesome and actually what I would really like to propose is, we're all employee township, we're employees of the township. I think we should all agree to adopt the rules and the guidelines in here. And I loved the job description because I've been kind of scrambling being, you know, when you look to the board, it's very spelled out and very succinct and I have a much better of, "Okay, here's my task at hand."
If I would suggest something, if this is not, if it's not a problem for you, I think we need to get this done so Patty has a lot of stuff she has to get in the works there before the end of the year. If there's something you come up with that you think is wrong, we could bring it up at a separate meeting later and if it's something that just reaches a dentist or group, it's not, you know, these are not actually cast in concrete so speed, but I think we need to get this done.
I guess why you need to be aware that I did not read all this.
Okay. Okay. I know it's a long email with a lot of attachments. Okay, so with that discussion, does anybody on the board want to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we accept the new management procedure guides and employee handbook.
And the benefit changes.
And the benefit changes, with the benefit changes.
With the changes.
Oh, yes, with the amendments.
You have to say with changes.
The corrections.
Is there a second to that?
And also, and if I do find something, they can bring that up.
Okay, is that all right?
Yeah.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Shelley, okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Carrie, just to be safe because this is significant stuff, would you take a roll call vote on it?
Patty Back?
Yes.
Shelley Kidd?
Yes.
Jim Christopher?
Yes.
Gina Musarelli?
Yes.
Bob DePaul.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to do the amendment?
I'm trying to find it. Here. Okay, the amendment to.
To start the new.
Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you. One of the things that happened, you know, when the state does its, thank you. When the state does its guideline for the health reimbursement account, it used to do it on its fiscal year, October 1st, and we never adopted our budget until April 1st. So, we were always months behind it. Then this past year, the state said, "Well, we're going to change it. We're going to update it January 1." Okay? But when we approve our budget, it's done with the number we had from the previous year. So, what we suggested is to get in sync with what the state is. We would like to have a motion to amend the state guideline number effective January 1 with the state's new guideline number and it goes up about 2% a year. Okay? And then, I said next April, when we approve next year's budget, we can approve the budget then with the footnote that it will be adjusted in the following January when the new guideline comes in again. That way, our employees get the benefit of whatever the state's current guideline is for that year rather than always being four or five months out of whack or like we were six or seven months out of whack. So, do you want to?
Did you make that motion?
Yes.
I'll support. I'll support the motion.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry, Patty.
No, I got the support.
Okay. I'm sorry. Are there any other questions from the board? Okay, Carrie, would you take a roll call vote on that?
Shelley Kidd?
Yes.
Jim Christopher?
Yes.
Gina Musarelli?
Yes.
Bob DePaul?
Yes.
Peggy Back?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, I forgot. We just talked about it. It's different. Okay, the other, next item, the one that's left on the agenda, the last item, is to discuss the office administrator deputy treasurer and Shelley, you wanted to have a discussion on this.
Yeah.
So, if you want, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Kind of changed my thought on how to handle this because I thought it was going to be a working session opposed to, yes, so I ended up writing something so I can stay on track and we can come there. All right? I would like to address the need of separation of the clerks department and the treasurers department. With the title of office administrator deputy treasurer, I believe this causes confusion to my deputy as to whom to report to and take direction from. The office administrator is under supervision of the clerk with a salary equaling $19.27 an hour. Meanwhile, the deputy position salary equates to 46 cents an hour. If the largest portion of the salary is coming from the clerks department and the majority of the work is done in the treasurers department, that in my opinion undervalues the deputy's position. The deputies are required to take the oath of office due to the importance of the responsibilities required as deputy to assist a treasurer in performing the statutory duties. I believe that by removing the office administrator from the title, this will ensure clarity as to whom they report to and take direction from. I've also called 10 surrounding townships and villages asking if they had any, an additional title added to their deputy. All but one was solely titled deputy treasurer. The other one was assistant to the treasurer.
Okay.
That was it. And that's basically it.
Okay. I think just by, by way of reference, I guess what we've, anybody feel free to jump in because I'm not trying to usurp this here. I think we've always considered the two support positions in the front office there as the staff support, which is why they're called office administrators. And what has happened in the past, the way we've always done it, is one of them tends to be more towards the clerk stuff and one tended to be more towards the treasurer stuff. And so, one of them ended up being the deputy clerk because they have to have a legal assignment to that and the other one had to have a deputy treasurer. And when you look at the statutory duties of the treasurer, the deputy treasurer, the actual only one they have is to be able to sign checks in the absence of the treasurers themselves in a timely manner. And from that perspective, the deputy treasurer could, could be, we've never done it this way, but could be anybody. It could be somebody in another township that had that responsibility because they just have to be able to say, "I can come in and sign checks if Shelley takes a vacation or was in the hospital or something like that." They could sign for you.
What about like different forms and things that have to be submitted to the US Treasury? I got monthly or quarterly reports that I send in. There's.
Oh, no, I'm not disputing that the staff support position has in fact heavily been related to the treasurer's office and I don't, I don't know. We actually had both staff supports report to you. I'm not aware of that. I'm asking because I don't know. I don't, we're such a small office, I've never really looked at it that way or noticed it that way. And a part of what we did was, we wanted to make sure that the staff that's actually hired by the township board, because we don't hire anybody here unless it's by the township board, felt that they could, you're aware of this, we did it because we felt that we didn't want the staff people to feel that they had undue pressure, that they could be dismissed from one of the other officers without having some representation. So, we made those positions, the two deputies really, just to stipend because there's not a whole lot of legal responsibility to have. And that way, you wouldn't have a situation where you worked for a clerk or you worked for a treasurer and for whatever reason you thought they would come and fire you, they can't. They're really staff support people. The deputy part could be literally, we haven't done it that way, be anybody because the requirement isn't that technically involved for.
So, what's the difference between the clerks, deputy clerk's responsibilities and she just writes checks also?
No, I don't know what she, I have to say, but I don't, I feel bad because Carrie does things for me too, writes letters and does things for me all the time, but she does a lot of planning work and she does things for the clerk, but her clerk deputy position is just like the one on the charger. It was $50 just so she could sign, I guess, whatever, you're not there, if you're not there. That's the purpose that we've used it. We're a small office, we've never had it. I'm just saying, that's how it's been. So, with that, I'll leave it to the rest of the board if you want to comment on it.
My, also, my opinion is, I mean, like I said, I thought it was going to be a working session that we could discuss.
It is, but altogether, so it ends up being a board meeting.
Right, but with the situation in the past, I don't want it reoccurring as far as if I'm requesting something to be done and they go to the clerk and the clerk decides with, "I don't want, you know, I don't want to do this," as the deputy goes to the clerk and clerk says, "Well, you don't have to." And so, it kind of leaves me where I don't feel like I have a deputy that, I guess I'm having a hard time expressing myself, but.
Apparently, Dale, I told Gail, who we're talking about, that she didn't have to do it. I supported Gail that she was an administrator to the entire office. That was it.
Okay, but going with that, when I first started here, Dan kind of told me something similar to that was, "We protected your job. We, you know, it's a good thing for you girls and he can't fire you if he doesn't like your work," which that's fine to me. I agree that it should be a decision of all. But my situation was, a month into her employment or about two months into it, I was told that, she told me that, "What happens if I can't do this job?" And the response was, "Well, we have no plans of replacing you." And from that point on, I didn't get a whole lot of help unless I sat with her. So, to me, if, for the deputy or the physician, you know, I mean, if you're going to minimize it just as signing checks, then, but I need, I need help doing my, you know, all my statutory duties.
This is a position where generally whoever has come in has had to be taught the job, not somebody that walks in the door and knows things. There were times when Gail was having trouble and yes, you and I talked and I had told you several times, you need to sit with her and continue to work with her.
I mean, basic balancing, to me, that was struggle. And comparing the position for you, you are the office administrator to Carrie and also you are, that is your deputy. So, to me, it kind of crosses the lines, I'm sorry, to Carrie. So, it kind of crosses the lines as far as I'm concerned.
Carrie does planning zoning and building. Pretty much the only thing Carrie does for me is she takes the board's events and if I'm not here and a check needs to be signed, she'll do that. Other than that.
I guess what I'm.
I do my own.
I guess what I'm confused about is, like, let's go back to you said you need to send quarterly reports. Do you send them or do you have an expectation that?
I do them.
Okay.
I do them.
So, then I'm not following, quite following that example as to what type of technical treasurer support do you need from someone who is not a supporter?
I have mobile home fees that I have to distribute.
Okay, but you keep saying aye, so what I'm looking for.
Well, my department.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's what I'm looking to clarify is where do you need the support? Where I'm looking at the same, okay, a treasurer's job is and I just looked here and I've got a list and I did, you know, I did read it. So, describe to me what it is that you're looking for in the role of someone who will fill this position.
Someone that can help me perform the duties and that wants to learn.
Because of you, there should be two of you. I mean, you, do you really, how much support do you need, I guess is, I mean, it's, and where, how am I, how can I say this? What are the, what are the specific treasurer type roles and maybe accounting assets or bookkeeping assets? You talked about balancing. Where, where's the qualification in that and where do you draw the line at, "Okay, I am done with this, I need to give this to someone else?"
Well, when I started, they did the public funds, which there is over 30 accounts that I balance. Excuse me. And then, we had our general fund, the fire fund, the 701, the 401. All of those need to be balanced also, which that was the deputy's job to do that and also to distribute the mobile home fees and the delinquent taxes and also help with processing tax payments. I mean, with this position, it's constantly changing. There's not, it's not just, I do this constantly throughout the year. There's different times of the year.
Like tax season, right.
And then, at the end of the year, I have settlement that I have to do, which is very time consuming and, you know, just somebody to kind of, if I made a spelling here, I can say, "Hey, will you look this over for me?" You know, I would like just a support, I guess, to put us down to that.
Can I ask a question?
Comments will be at the end, okay? I think part of the issue is, we've always had a fairly small office compared to a lot of other municipalities. I don't have a deputy supervisor. Carrie's function as deputy clerk's fairly minimized because she's really heavily into the building and planning department and sometimes I would admittedly, she has the misfortune of being closest to my office, so she gets most of my letters, but sometimes I would go to Gail too and have her do stuff and that's the aspect that makes them part of, as an office administrator. If we change that, are you suggesting we have two people?
Well, but I guess, should go back on that. As far as the education and what's needed to be done, I had went on vacation and, or I went to a conference and I had asked if she would go to a monthly VSA, taxes are good for me. And I've only missed that twice in almost five years I've been here. Those classes are very important and you get a lot of information and a lot of networking. And I asked her if she would go to that before, this was going to be the last meeting before we committed our taxes. So, please take the notes and then that way, when I get back, you can fill me in. And she never responded to me and then I get up in the first day of my vacation of Patty texting me, telling me that Bob and I called her into the office and told her that she didn't need to go. And just little incidents like that, it feels like I'm, my job isn't important to anybody.
It's not that. When that one came in, I remember that one, she came in, she had some conflict in being able to get something done and we were light staff and so, we made a decision, you, I said, "Text her and let her know you won't be able to get that done today because we need you right now in the office." That's exactly the reason why she's really been an office administrator, so if something like that comes up, we have the flexibility to do it. I guess, I know part of what's happening here is we got to end up all looking at, frankly, I'm pleased, this landslide of applications that came in here with 14 or 15 of them, I think by today, that we need to look at. I'm not sure that for whatever problems we had with this last one, that that doesn't mean that one of these people might not be suitable to work, like going forward because that's, the scenario that's in place now is the exact scenario you were under and the scenario that Laura was under before that and that I think.
Melissa?
Melissa and before, okay. Yeah, for the 24 years I've been here, it's been basically that way.
But I guess, I did that, but the classes, I mean, my first six months, I remember Dale asking me, "What are all these course, what have you done to educate yourself?" And I have a long list of all the things. And I've been asked, "Dale, to take some classes?" And she's pretty much denied me because she said that, you know, it'd be one thing if I didn't already have my career, but I just like to keep busy.
Well, but to that point, I'm saying that doesn't mean that whoever hired next would be that.
And, but.
I don't want to use somebody's name because I don't think that's fair to them.
Right, and that's why I.
But if it didn't work that way, that doesn't mean that it wouldn't work okay with these.
But as we brought up when we had the special meeting a few months ago, the importance of having someone that you can rely on to help you and because if you're losing someone and.
But across the board, everybody should have that in this office. So, would you be looking one for someone who did the same things that you did when you were in that position? And two, would you establish a criteria of certain things you'd want them to learn in the hiring process before you even hired them? This is what I'm going to ask of you, you know, and then we can.
And that's why when I wrote up the resume application for online of different things, those are programs that are needed.
And however, that would have embedded the paper when we hired in the past, several people would not have, with those.
But also.
Laura.
Right, right. But also with that.
What's your question?
Pardon?
No, go ahead.
With that being said, I just lost my train of thought there.
So, would you have the same expectation to do what you did? That would be.
I would expect them to want to learn it, yes. And as I said, at the special meeting. And as I said at the special meeting, I wanted a merit system, and.
Yeah, and I don't know anything about that.
Or, of course, if you are trying, I can see if, you know, obviously, when I first started here, I was overwhelmed, and, I mean, I went home crying several times, like, what did I get myself into? But I sucked it up and kept trying and trying, and that's how I got to where I am now, in which, you know, I'm not saying that whoever that's in that pile there that we choose is going to want to aspire this far, but at least I would like them to want to aid me in getting the job done.
So those would be good questions, though, on an interview, when, you know, fourteen's a lot to go through, and I'm going to kind of suggest what we've done in the past, we 've all eight done, studied, and some of them literally just came in the last night of this morning. So we would look at them, and what we've done in the past is everybody kind of rank orders on what you think will be the best candidate going down, and then we get together and kind of see this, and what we've done in the past, does everybody think this one is like number one or two? And that's one of the ones that you set up an interview with, but to your point, I think those questions and concerns that you've had in the past would be exactly what you would want to ask them in the interview process. This is how I expect to have help for the treasurer's office, do you see any problems with those? That's where I think it would get fixed, but that's my assessment.
But with that also, I mean, I'm supposed to appoint my deputy, in which I have no problem with going over, but I was told also, as far as the way this system goes here, that because I'm the only one that knows how to do my job or what needs to be done, that I would be the one to narrow it down to the top lines, and if there was questions or whatever, we could go over that.
Well, I think what has happened in the past when we've done these, we've all, whoever was on the board at the time, all looked at them, all discussed them, and what I would say is, it wasn't unilaterally exactly the same with anybody, but there were usually two or three of whatever the candidates were that everybody felt came up, and when we did the last hire, the board that did the interviews was unanimous in the decision, admittedly, we only had three candidates at that time, no one else applied for it.
There was two others that did apply.
I never saw them, okay? If there were, I never saw them. I saw three that we interviewed, yeah, and when we did the three, we all came away with the same opinion, with your predecessor at the time, so that's who we hired.
And I'm just going to say, in the, in the book that we just agreed to adopt, it does say, no one of us has the authority to make a decision.
And I don't really, I did acknowledge that, but with it being for my position, it would be.
Oh, yeah, it should be apparent, if you're going through.
Clearly, I don't think we were.
Because I don't know what Patty does, I mean, you know.
I would, I would like to see a copy of the, what you said you put out and what you were looking for.
It's in the paper right now, when you speak.
Okay, oh, all, okay, I get it, I have read that, then, all right, I thought you might be setting something else up. I can look at that, and then look at that based against the applications, that's what any good business does.
And exactly, and that's, you know, but.
But that is all of us doing.
Right, but as I'm saying, is my, my point of.
But you've established that criteria.
And I don't think anybody's ever hired somebody for that position and not weighed heavily on the treasurer's, if, because even on the last one, Dave was completely agreement, we just.
And then he, before he left, he did tell me that he spoke with you both and said that it wasn't working out.
He said, he said, I don't remember any call like that. I don't remember anything like that if he said that.
Well, he's not your defender.
Oh, I'm not, and it's probably neither current or there. I think I would have remembered that, and I don't have any recollection of that, but. She was only here about, how long was she here before last?
She was here for a little while sitting here.
Was she? No, no, before Dave left.
Oh, she was starting this, um, Dave left.
Two months, okay.
Two months. Two months, somebody's not going to learn everything in two months.
But it wasn't, excuse me, it wasn't necessarily, not that she wasn't willing to learn, it wasn't willing to, to take the time, that's.
Right, so to the board, I see three things, so currently, one, we want to, as we ferret through the resumes, find someone who has displayed right here a minimum level of competency that we think can function as an office administrator. Two, the ability upon interview or scrutiny, the ability to learn in receptiveness, I can't talk, receptiveness, to be trained, and then I think there's a third issue that we might have hinted on at the beginning of your discussion, perhaps the amount of time dedicated to supporting you, is that a panel? So the first two, we're going to ferret out through the interview process, the third, I think, is administrative decision.
Yeah, we've never just done it any other way, it's always been heavily into the treasurer's.
That's what I'll make sure I'm right there.
It's just not exclusively, like, I don't have a deputy supervisor, but, you know, I'll ask Carrie to write a letter for me, and sometimes I would ask the other person to write a letter or get a file for me, it's that kind of incidental stuff that I do, but I guess I would want to limit it from not being able to do that.
And I'm not asking for you as not to have input.
Well.
But I just wanted to be aware of, of this situation, and I would like, I would like going forward for things to move more smoothly.
Well, I think we understand your concern, and I think in the interview process, that certainly, we would certainly look to you to make sure you draw those things out that are concerns you think that may not have been drawn out in the past, so that you're more comfortable with it going forward. I don't, I don't know if we want, I'm not trying to cut anything off, is there anything else anybody wants to say? Okay, if not, I'm going to suggest, and feel free to interject anybody if you want to, but I'm going to suggest that we take all of these, look them over, and then set up a date, maybe in a week or two, because I know the holidays are.
Well, I have forty-five days to appoint someone.
Oh, do you, okay, how many, how much time is?
I just, it's on the third, so I would like to.
So you need it before, like, the eighteenth of January?
I would like to be able to start making some calls and at least do a phone interviews with them, you know, and then.
Anybody have a problem with that?
I can go through these in a couple of days.
Yeah.
Okay, well, pick a day.
Is there any reason why I can't take these, because I'm leaving tomorrow? With me, and look at them there, and then that way I can be available, if you've got somebody that is like, okay, I'd like this one.
Yeah, absolutely.
Take a look.
And I will, I will try and get mine at least started tomorrow, okay? Wonder what date do we want to try and pick to get together?
I didn't work a calendar.
Because I got a bunch of stuff written, I don't want.
Patty, we have an official board meeting, because I'm out of town all next week. Can you call me?
Yeah, well, we're going to, we'll have to, I would say, if we can go through these and see what we're doing, we can set up interviews for the first part of January, and have somebody.
Well, Dale's last day was on the third, so I have to go by forty-five days from that day.
So it's been sixteen days.
Somebody has to be available to be sworn in.
It's been sixteen days.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying, the holiday, it just kind of, it kind of eliminates time.
Shelley, we have forty-five days to come up with a deputy.
Yes, otherwise, one will be.
But the deputy is, can be.
That's kind of a formality.
Yeah.
Yes, you can appoint.
And you can appoint a deputy and then change it too.
Right, because that's just the stipend, right?
That's, that's.
You can appoint, I, I would be, excuse, I would be able to do it as early as the twenty-third if everybody else is, I only have one meeting right now scheduled on.
I'll leave that till the thirtieth.
And Bob, I'm out of town all next week, I can chime in by phone.
Ah, that's not really good to do on a board meeting.
No, I, no, not for a board meeting.
So, the, the thirtieth or is it?
I will be back the thirtieth.
And will you be back the thirtieth?
Before, twenty-sixth or seventh.
Are you going to be here?
I'm hoping to be here.
Okay.
I'll be here, I got to collect taxes.
All right, this is, thirtieth sound like a day?
Sure.
Meeting, okay, board meeting, somebody remember to post that, put it out, board meeting.
May I add with that, well, is that going to be in the evening?
No, let's do it in the morning, because I don't want.
Well, my thing is, is the office has been closed, and I was going to be open for collecting taxes, so if we're going to be doing that, would Teresa be willing to come in and answer the phone?
Teresa's going to be here anyway, we all are.
Okay, oh, that's right, you didn't say.
The problem is, is that is an extremely busy day with people coming in and paying taxes, or, like, it is very, I've been here for a long day.
Well, so, I want to say, as far as.
Go to the sixth of September.
Okay, I'm good with this, is sixth, okay, January sixth, that'll get it in time, right?
Yeah.
Is that good for everybody? Okay, special board meeting?
Okay.
And what time you want to do it? Just get in the morning, because it, make a tentacle, okay? And what we'll do is go over the resumes and any information you've got in the meantime, and then see if we can figure out down who we want to do the interviews on and get those scheduled pretty quick, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
What time is it?
Ten.
Okay, okay, I got it locked in a little bit now. Okay, is that a motion then to have the special board meeting on the sixth of January to review the resumes as a group and any information that you're able to ascertain in the meantime, so that we can determine who we want to have formal interviews with, right?
Yes.
Sounds good, okay? Seth, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Gina, okay? Any other questions from the board or comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, okay, forget that, Carrie? Okay, I have nothing under resolutions or miscellaneous, so now it's open for public comment.
In reference to Shelley's request, according to the empty red book, the treasurer is required to appoint a deputy in the same manner as required of the township clerk. In the absence, in the case of absent sickness, death, or other disability of the treasurer, the deputy has all the powers and may perform all the duties of the treasurer, except voting on the township board. With the approval of the township board, the deputy may assist in performing the treasurer's duties at any additional times agreed upon between the deputy and the treasurer. The deputy is paid compensation as determined by the township board. The deputy need not be qualified, be a qualified elector or taxpayer of the township.
That's right.
My interpretation would be that Shelley has the ultimate decision as who.
She does, as a deputy treasurer, so what we're talking about is filling the position we had that was administrative assistant, hopefully, and what's traditionally been done, because it's more efficient and works better, is she would be confident that this next person we hire is somebody that has the ability to do what she's looking for and make them the deputy. But you're right, she doesn't have to, she could hire somebody in the two townships over to be the deputy, as long as they feel they could come in and sign the checks and all that stuff.
They don't have.
That's really the bulk of what they have to do, is to be able to come in and sign checks in your absence, is what it is.
And that is for a stipend, that is not a full-time employment.
Correct.
Which is the way we've done this, there are the townships that are small, and that's one of the ways we keep the cost for running the office down. But she doesn't have to pick that person, but obviously, there's a reason she's a.
I would just hope that Shelley is comfortable with the choice that she makes, and she's the one that would have to be working intimately with that person.
And I would agree with you completely, and in the past, that's always been the case, when we've hired somebody with the treasurer at that time, with the person that they felt was best qualified, the rest of us usually had the same opinion, but we relied heavily on the treasurer, because that's the one that they would end up working most closely with, and that, that's always how we've done it. Okay, any other comments, did you want to say something?
I just had a question, sir.
Sure.
In the past, so when Dave was the treasurer, and Shelley was the deputy treasurer, and Patty was deputy clerk, and.
And, yep, we got it right.
So were they, has it ever been separate, two different people, instead of, are we merging it into one now?
We've, we have never had them separated, because the office is so small, and we, we didn't want to have a deputy treasurer and a deputy clerk and a couple of staff people.
So it's never been two separate?
No, to be honest with you, the only job that's ever kind of been split is hers. She's doing yeoman's work here, doing a ton of stuff for us on a lot of different things, and I can tell you, in the past, the planning and the building administrator, which is what Carrie really does primarily, has been a full-time job by itself. What happened is, when the economy tained in two thousand nine, you know, everything shrunk to like, nobody was doing anything, and so we had a couple of people that wanted to retire, and at that time, what we did is we didn't fill their vacancies, okay, and that kind of kept the operating expense down, but as some stuff has picked up, even though houses haven't picked up that much, there's still a lot of people, you know, new barns and additions and stuff, so her department is pretty active now, and we have a lot more planning meetings than we used to, so, to answer your question, it's always been the same.
I just wanted that to move, to ask you a clarification.
Okay, no, so good question.
Because, I mean, I've known all the people, I wanted to clarify how the positions were.
Been that way the whole twenty-four years I've been here. Okay, any other questions?
Do we know what the state guidelines are that is going to be on the H R A for the firefighters?
Yeah, we do Patty's guidance, let me go grab it. She'll be great, because they just changed the effective January, but typically, what they've been doing the last couple of years, it looks like it goes up about two percent a year, so it's a couple hundred bucks difference, but she's, she's got the number, we had it this, I don't have it in front of me, but we had it this way. And that was one of the things we thought we should adjust, because we've always been at, all along, we have been six months in arrears or better from the state, and then when they moved it up to January, we would be, what, three months in arrear, and what we're going to do now is try and make it consistent with when the state does it.
So those funds will go in the beginning of every month for those insurance?
Yep, yep, and we're going to have a phone call this morning to try and get that all set up.
You said that you're thinking about doing it on a quarterly basis.
That's the money we put into it, that's quarterly, but I mean, your card should be effective January one, and we're, I, I suggested to Patty do it a quarterly, just so she doesn't have to do it every month for now.
Oh, so you do the first three months at a time?
Yeah, just, just, because I want to make sure there's money in there for people when they use it, and I don't want to have her buried in if we're doing it, because we're canceling two or three other benefits and options and putting this in.
So I had talked with Todd just before we came in, and I had given him the one, because I didn't know if they were going to start the new with the January first guideline, so he has a number of eighteen thousand two hundred thirty-two thirty-one, but the family plan is eighteen thousand five ninety-six ninety-six as of January first. For the spouse and the employee, it's fourteen thousand two sixty thirty-seven cents, and for just the employee, it's six thousand eight hundred eighteen dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Thank you.
Okay? You're welcome.
Okay, any other public comment?
I have a question.
Sure.
When, and it's not an attempt to talk tonight, so maybe I can ask you afterward, and you didn't, how do I find out when the planning commission meeting minutes for the last meeting is going to be posted?
Carrie, you know when they get sent in?
When, at the next meeting?
It can't be until they're approved at the next meeting, right? So they don't post them, you know, they, she writes them for the meeting, then they have to wait till whenever the next P C meeting is, planning commission, to approve them, and then they can be posted after that, because until then, they're considered crap.
And because it's every other month, that's why it's so long for planning.
But, yeah, it's like, right now, the only one was posted, I think, are like September or something.
Yeah, because the last one, I haven't had it.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, now, motion to adjourn will be in order.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.